Welcome to the Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, February 5th, 2024. I will open the session. Agenda item two is closed session, so I will read this. Under Minnesota's statute, section thirteen B point zero five subdivision three eight, the city council has the authority to conduct a closed session for the review of any employee under direct supervision. The only topic of the discussion in this closed session will be the performance review of city administrator Pat Araspe. This meeting will be taped and the recording kept for three years as required by the Minnesota opening, as is required by the state statute. A summary of conclusions regarding the evaluation will be given at the next open session of the Chaska City Council session. I do need a motion for closed session and a second.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by council member Hubbard.
Second.
Second by council member Hatfield. All in favor of moving into a closed session for the city administration interview, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, team sign.
I'm the Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, February 5th, 2024. We're going to call the meeting to order at seven oh three. We please stand and join me in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Sorry for the delay. We had a closed session prior to the meeting and we just ran a little late. And we had an interview for a commission, so busy night already. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and, um, yeah, it's way different here. All right, at least we call roll, please.
For Hatfield?
Here.
For Hubbard?
Here.
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 Here. All right, next, we're going to move to adopt the agenda, corrections or additions to the agenda. If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to move consent item A, the appointment of the Parks and Recommission Chair and Vice Chair, to action item two.
Okay, so we have a motion to move consent item A to action item two, based on how we have to properly do appointments. So with that, any discussion? All right, so I got a motion. I need a second. I need a second, sorry.
Second.
So I got a motion by council member Grau, second by council member Hatfield, to move action item A to, uh, our consent item A to action item two, so discussion. Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same side? Motion carries. All right, next, we are in visitor presentation. I have a number of folks here tonight. Uh, is Dave, Dave is not here. So we're going to recognize a couple of commission members that are left. We'll just have to do it at the next one. So, all right, that one's, uh, next, I have, uh, Al Sherwood about election integrity. And under consent, um, this is, this is an opportunity for visitors to come forward and talk with us. Uh, we limited five minutes, so after five minutes, we'll, we'll stop and we'll move forward, so.
Five minutes is all I need.
Okay, and then, so we need, as you come forward, we need name and an address for our records, please.
Yeah, my name is Al Sherwood and I live in Chanhassen. This is Mike in Good Spot. And thank you for this time to be with you, sharing my thoughts on election integrity matters in Minnesota. Absentee and mail-in ballots are documented to have the highest potential for fraud, including concerns with identity theft, lost ballots, and chain of custody issues. A certain administrative rule in Minnesota has made absentee voting a major election integrity issue. With regard to signature matching, the state law requires that the voter must have signed the absentee ballot. The Secretary of State's office, along with an okay from the Minnesota Court of Appeals, has in place administrative rule eight two one zero dot two four five oh, which now allows for any voter to have signed an absentee ballot. Instead of making the common sense determination that the law requires that the same person sign the, the application and the ballot, and the signatures appear to be the same based on common sense and good judgment, the court essentially held that any person can sign any ballot for anyone without limitation. Even if there is a signature mismatch, according to the rule, the ballot must be accepted unless the names are different. The majority of votes in 2020 were cast as absentee ballots. Does it give you any confidence knowing that any person can sign any ballot for anyone? And what could possibly go wrong with that? With regard to party balance, Simon's rule also subverted the legislature's intent that party-balanced election judges from the major parties accept or reject all absentee ballots. The rule makes election judges who keep the vote honest completely unnecessary on ballot boards and allows government, unionized staff to accept, reject all absentee ballots, even if those staff members are themselves candidates on the ballot. Mail-in balloting has increased astronomically since Simon has taken office, as he's prioritized convenience over security every step of the way. Simon's rules told cities and counties they could ignore the party-balance requirements, and that they didn't have to put any election judges on absentee ballot boards to accept, reject ballots, even when the law says they must. Ballot boards look like black boxes to me. The work is done behind closed doors instead of an open forum as required by law. Official challengers were wrongly denied the right to challenge at, at a meeting of an absentee ballot board. They should be able to challenge an envelope, just as they can challenge the person in person. I realize counties are told what to do and that they can, what they can do by St. Paul, but I call, I call on Carver County to make their ballot boards more transparent. I call on Minnesota to respect the rule of law that was put in place by due process and not the opinion of one Secretary of State and one appellate judge. Video surveillance of drop boxes does not prevent people from putting in more than one ballot. This is a huge chain of custody issue. Wisconsin and other states have outlawed drop boxes. I call on Minnesota to do the same. Although it was a nationwide, a nationwide survey, given all this, it's not surprising then to see that a recent poll by Rasmussen alongside the Heartland Institute found that in the 2020 election, one in five people who voted by mail committed some type of voter fraud, and this, by the way, is according to these people's own admission. Lastly, I believe that same-day registration is fraught with election integrity issues. Once again, Secretary Simon prioritizes convenience over security by turning a blind eye to a same-day voter registration process that allows anyone to register to vote on Election Day and have their vote count immediately, immediately without verification of their identity. Forty-seven other states have provisional balloting in place to set these ballots aside to be counted after they're verified, and I call on Minnesota to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next, I have Jennifer Ray, absentee ballot board. And I'll name and address both.
One of each.
Uh, they're four like a pack, so just.
Oh, just take a pack.
Thank you, and good evening. Jennifer Ray with Chanhassen, Minnesota, and I'm here actually calling for action from each and every one of my council members, and here's why. Absentee ballot boards, which was new to me probably two years ago, but I've done a lot of study on them, and it was a surprise to me that in Carver County, uh, we don't follow this League of Women Voters handout. So we're going to go to page two where I have it highlighted, opening and processing the absentee ballots. It says, "Election judges are required to identify a party affiliation because two election judges of the same party cannot work together." We don't do that in Carver. It also says that there are two parts of the process in the county. The first is receiving and verifying, and then after that, it says after the ballot board has received all the absentee ballots that came in for that day, they check to make sure the people have not voted yet, and it goes on. Let's go to the next page, because we are in a hurry, where it is highlighted. Then ballots are removed from the ballot secrecy envelope. All steps of the counting process are done in pairs with two election judges of differing parties. We do not do that here in Carver County. It says, "If a voter marked their ballot improperly, a team of election judges of different parties will go through the, through and determine the intent of the voter." We do not do that here in Carver County. The pendulum was a hundred percent. It's all Democrats by our county employees doing it, and I say that because typically the, if the government is paying your paycheck, you tend to be more Democrat. Now, there is not such a thing as a nonpartisan employee, and I'll tell you why. With almost a hundred percent voter turnout, if you didn't know, we have a hundred percent voter turnout here in Carver County. Um, that means everyone's voted, and if you voted, you picked, you picked a side. There's no nonpartisanship. So my call to action is our commissioners, there's five of them, hopefully everybody here knows them, they have the authority, they have the responsibility, they have the ability to say, "We want party balance, vetted party balance from the A to Z process of processing these absentee ballots." Since I've been on this mission to educate all the cities and townships, number one, people are shocked that we don't already do that. Number two, probably more than half are compelled to actually take some action, meaning go more than just scratch their head. They're willing to make a phone call to their commissioner, they're willing to reach out to their commissioners and say, "I've got people in my district that want party balance from the A to Z process." And again, I'm going to add the word vetted party balance. And so I'm looking for all of you to do the same. Since people have been doing that, the pendulum is actually swinging. So instead of being, if you look at it like a clock at eleven fifty-nine minutes and fifty-nine seconds, I would say we probably moved it five minutes, and I'm looking for it to be at the thirty-minute mark. I want there to be transparency. There is no reason in the world we can't have transparency. And reiterating what Al said, there was over fifty percent of our votes for Carver County with almost a hundred percent voter turnout, if you can believe that number, were done by absentee ballot. So that means almost everybody in Chaska who can vote, voted, and more than half of those people voted via absentee. Now, what surprised me on this is not only was this on the League of Women Voters website, but after I started handing this copy out, and this is dated December, the first one that I found was in April, they've since changed their website to not have that the parties do everything, because as Al reiterated before, we have our wonderful Mr. Simon, our Secretary of State, waived all any transparency so that they can just kind of push through all sorts of different ease of voting regulations. And I hope that just as a person, you find this a nonpartisan issue, that you find transparency important for your voters, and that you think that it is the right thing to do is to have vetted party balance from the A to Z process of our absentee ballots, which represent over fifty percent of our votes. So I call on you council member Grau, Hung, Winchell, Hubbard, and Hatfield to please contact your commissioner and support them having vetted party balance from A to Z on the processes of our ballots. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, that's all I see, and there's no one else here, so, um, all right, we'll move on. Next thing, we have a staff report from, uh, that was my timer, sorry. We have a staff report from our police department, uh, drone program chief Cybert. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. The good news is you won't have to listen to me talk tonight. Hunter's going to take the lead on this presentation.
We'd rather listen to you.
No, well, we'll see. Let's give him a chance. If you recall, police staff have been working for a period of time in putting together a drone program, um, which would include a formal policy and procedures, and Hunter and Sergeant Personias have both worked together in a coordinating role on this. So what you'll hear from Hunter tonight is just a very high-level overview of where we are right now as it pertains to what the policy would look like, um, what our procedures would look like. Um, and then when he's done, of course, if you have any questions, we'll collectively get those answered. So I'll turn it over to Officer Panik.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Mayor, Council, thanks for having us tonight. Um, there is a PowerPoint presentation, um, I believe. I don't know if it was in the agenda, but.
I don't know, Fred. How'd you put it there?
Yeah, so we'll go along with that. I'm really excited to talk about drones tonight, um, something I've been kind of passionate about over the last few years, um, flying my personal drone, and then also just kind of seeing how public safety agencies.
Didn't I remind you how that was illegal when you were flying that?
Say what?
Didn't I remind you how that was illegal when you were flying that?
Oh, I never did anything illegal.
Yeah. I think I did.
Um, and really to see how all, um, the public safety agencies that have integrated this into their operations, how beneficial it is. So first, we'll talk about, um, a few acronyms. As the federal government is so good at, there are a whole bunch of acronyms in aviation. Um, and quite frankly, in, in the drone world, when you're referring to a drone, they all kind of mean the same thing. So you have UAV, which is an unmanned aerial vehicle. That's the technical name for a drone. Um, you have unmanned aerial system, which incorporates the drone, the pilot, and the remote control in one kind of noun. And then you have an SUAS, which is the Small Unmanned Aircraft System, which is what we will operate. Um, that just, um, essentially means a drone under fifty-five pounds, and it's not capable of carrying people. Um, to properly operate the UAV, all components of the unmanned aerial system are required, so you need the drone, the pilot, and the software to communicate between the two. Next side, please. Um, so this is the DJI Matrice series M thirty T. This is what, uh, we would like to get as a police department. Um, on the left side is, uh, one that's bare without any accessories, and then on the right side, you can see on top it has a mounted speaker. Um, we would propose getting that as well to communicate with people on the other side of the drone, and we'll go into that a little bit later, but that's what it looks like. Pretty light, I'd say probably about two feet by one foot when it's all put together. Uh, the number, so a little bit kind of a broad picture of what public safety agencies have been using these for. Um, every year, the Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehension publishes a drone report. By January fifteenth of every year, agencies that have drones are required to submit their, um, annual usage, if you will, for the prior year. So since we are not far away from January fifteenth, we still only have twenty-twenty-two data available to us. And in that year, ninety-eight law enforcement agencies had drones. Now, it's important to remember that they do distinguish law enforcement from fire, from a communications department, from whatever. So this is not just broad government. This is just law enforcement agencies that must report. And in those ninety-eight agencies, they had three thousand seventy-six reported uses, which is up from the year prior. And I'd be willing to bet as we move forward, we'll just keep seeing this number increase as more agencies adopt this technology and it's used. Um, in that report from the VCA, they categorize the usages from the state statute. So the most common used reason code was for training or public relations purposes. Now, I suspect that will be ours as well. It's a great tool to kind of engage with the community, take out a national night out, um, teach people how we find people using the drone, and then kind of just show them what the technology is all about. The second most used reason code was for during or in the aftermath, or an emergency situation that involves the risk of death or great bodily harm. So this is pretty bo, pretty broad. Um, that was twenty-three percent of the deployments are just under seven hundred. So this is what I would suspect we would use ours for, um, quite frequently, quite frequently as well. And then the third most, um, used code was for to collect information for crash reconstruction purpose or after a serious or deadly collision. Now, this is primarily from the Minnesota State Patrol. They actually reconstruct their crashes now with drones if the weather allows. So they still have it on the ground if they need it, but primarily they're doing it from the air, and that's where you'd see almost five hundred deployments for that. They have the software to map out the scene of a fatal collision.
Does that speed up the process?
I, I've heard it does, because they just have to put in points of reference, and then it flies on its own.
Is it more accurate?
Not sure on that. Uh, I would assume if, that it's their, if it's their choice versus the ground.
So every time the drone goes up, we have to track a reason?
So what are the drone capabilities? Um, obviously, the primary function is the camera. That's really what it's used for. Um, the camera has thermal imaging zoom capabilities up to twenty times, um, live streaming. So this is a really cool feature where, let's say, I'm out in the field with the drone, flying it, then there's a command post, you know, a few blocks away. We can stream the drone feed straight to that command post or anyone else that has that link. So it can be streamed live for people to view, um, and then we can track people or vehicles. Um, if, if the drone's in the air and you want to, uh, track a person that's, you know, running away from us, or a vehicle that's running away from us, um, or a missing person, we can just trace that person on the screen, and then the drone will follow it automatically. Flight times will vary, uh, based on weather, piloting skill, things like that, but the one we're getting can fly up to fifty minutes. And we do plan on purchasing several batteries, so hypothetically, we'd be able to fly for a few hours at least. And it does have a payload of eleven pounds. Um, for an agency like us, I'm not sure, uh, how to, how that transitions into practicality, but we can haul something up to eleven pounds if we would need. I do have a few recent news stories, one out of Eagan and then one out of, um, Ohio, I believe. The one out of Ohio was just from January of this year. It's a really cool story about how a drone found a missing kid, so we'll have that played.
This is Eagan, so. You got sound, Krista? We don't.
The sound of the drone is humming out the sound of the voice.
Are you saying it's droning?
Yes.
I do have sound. Let me try and see if I can't fix that for you.
Is this the same model that we'd be looking at?
This one's one step bigger than ours.
Okay.
Very similar.
What's the, like, what's the life cycle on a drone? Like, how, how, how would the schedule of replacement be? How many years?
Yeah, that's a good question. So it is going to truly depend on how much we use it. Um, the batteries are the thing that will need to be replaced the most. Sure. But the actual component in the drone and the camera, there's no reason that would go bad, um, unless it, of course, crashes.
The technology, like advancements, do those things, are they one in the same? Can you replace the camera but keep the, the base unit?
You know, because these, these all require FAA certification to fly these. Now, have you guys got your certs ready, or are you guys doing it after once you get the drone?
Most of us have them, but that's coming up in the presentation.
Cool.
Please, Mike, will you jump forward?
Yeah, we'll, we'll fill in a lot of the gaps in the latter stages of Hunter's presentation, but that's one thing with the FAA certification we have gotten in front of that already. So I think we've had three operators go through successfully pass the coursework, and then we have a fourth that still needs to take the test.
Is the certification different for law enforcement then for civilian use, or at least for drones, or is it basically the same right now?
It's the same. It's all called part one oh seven.
Still part one oh seven?
Yeah.
But so there's no, there's no, um, exceptions for restricted airspace and stuff for law enforcement purposes or things like that can be? Okay.
Is that? It's kind of complicated, but we can do what's called a waiver, um, and emergency waivers. We can basically waive any of the FAA regulations for, it's called special government interest.
So like, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. You're not done.
So for like a search, like search and rescue, for example, you know, where it's like, we're trying to find a lost kid or something like that. It's like, then, you know, you could, if we needed to, I don't think, I don't even know if there's any restricted airspace over Chaska, but if there were, then presumably, yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking. There is no restricted airspace. Okay. Love Creek Drive or Road, just on the east side of Chaska, right up into Chan, that's like the line between, um, restricted and unrestricted for flying cloud.
Oh, yep.
So we're lucky, everything west of that is unrestricted airspace.
We can get temporary restrictions, like for special events.
That was my question. If we use this, like, say, crowd control at, like, a major golf event, does that, who, does the golf course restrict us, or do we override, or?
We'd work with the FAA, because the, our local FAA office would put that restriction in, and then we would work with them on getting waived so we could fly our.
So the host of the event could work with them to get a restriction, then we could say, "Well, hey, here we, you know, okay." I was just curious, because I, I don't know if that's a, a, an idea for a use of it, but right, I think crowd control, you know, large events, I think of those types of things. I was just curious, because, um, I know typically there are restrictions in those large events for different, for different things.
Yep.
Don't take your boat in the water.
Hunter, if she can't get the sound to play, I might just have to describe.
We can just keep going. Um.
Oh, try one more time.
Yeah, you could just tell us.
It's walking through.
Is the sound working?
We're just overviewing their program, um, Eagan's program. They kind of have a very sophisticated program. We can probably forego playing this without sound, but the next one, there are some pictures of the thermal imaging of the police officers and the lost kid, and how they kind of reunite each other with the drone.
And I can tell you from my experience in four years here, I mean, we seem to have at least one annually, probably more, where whether it's a kid or some other individual, middle of the winter gets out of their house, and then time is obviously of the essence with temperatures and weather, uh, to locate them as quickly as possible. And to this point, we've been very fortunate that they've all ended well, um, in our community, but this would definitely be a very important tool when finding them is proving to be a challenge.
So would the, would the drone be like out in the squad, or would it be kind of kept back at the, that station, and then if we, if it was needed, then, you know, whoever's on duty would run back to the station, pull it, and then bring it out to the field?
So it potentially could be a little bit of both. So we would have four operators, uh, would be the tentative plan, so they'd be the only ones that would be able to deploy, um, the drone. So if one of them happened to be working, um, I would imagine that would go out in the field and would be in a squad car, and then we'd have a second one here at the police department or two, um, if nobody was on duty, but then that quickly could be obtained and put into a squad and taken into the field.
Okay, cool. All right, so they'll make this bigger once, um, the anchor goes away, but as you can see here, they're trying to illustrate where the missing kid is in the woods, and then the cop who's trying to, I'm assuming can hear him or, um, maybe even hear some footprints or something, but once he goes away, they'll make it a bigger screen for you.
Did you add closed captioning if you want to read along, by the way?
It's like it's, it's on, but it's just really tiny.
No, she did.
Yeah, you want me to read that?
Bigger. So the officer is right under police officers, and then the kid.
Wow.
Is.
Wow.
Yeah.
What'd you like?
Thermal imaging.
So you're, yeah, so you're seeing a difference between thermal and then live, just live streaming. So the thermal makes the hotter heat signature much more white appearing, and then the background is dark because it's not as warm. So there's the kid, and the operator presumably is talking to other officers on, you know, their two-way radios.
Is the kid lost? He almost looks like he's.
Same, he is. Was that?
Is, was he actually lost?
Yeah.
Okay, because he looks like he was kind of, like he was.
He's lost, and he does live with autism, too.
Oh, okay.
Was attracted to a nearby water source.
That is insane to see, like, how close they are, but probably can't see that child without this.
Yeah, that aerial view. Yeah. It's like they're camouflaged.
It's like they're camouflaged.
So very neat technology being deployed all over the country. And like I said earlier, almost, I would be willing to bet over 100 agencies now have it compared to last year's report.
Can you send us this so that we can see the links later?
Yeah.
Chief.
A hundred agencies.
One more story here for you. So this was just last month, early January. City of New Brighton posted this on their Facebook page. So they had a report of a armed male who was reported to be carrying a rifle. They deployed their drone and found the male without making person-to-person contact and were able to direct the male to drop everything in his hand and then they approached. But as you can see here in a still shot, they must have been giving him commands at this time. But he still had that rifle appearing object, I guess, in his hand at the time. And they were away from him seeing all of this happen live. And.
The purpose of having the speaker on top?
Yep, exactly. Giving him commands to drop everything in his hands. And of course, with that technology, they had a wonderful outcome for everyone. Really removes that human element to the dangerous situation.
I feel like if you have that speaker on top, it's nice too, because when you have to get your voice loud, it sounds so much more aggressive and like, yeah, you're being aggressive, but it's probably a little bit less aggressive sounding. But the right amount of aggressive sounding for the situation versus having to like yell so loud.
The escalation.
De-escalation, yeah.
Do they have lights on?
Yeah, so you have to have your flying lights, the strobe lights that indicate for other air traffic. But then ours will also hopefully have a spotlight for searching. So both. So a little bit about our earlier discussion, what will we use it for? Per state statute, it's very easily and clearly laid out for us. There's not much we have to kind of learn on our own, if you will. First of all, when authorized by a warrant, so if we are going to use it for a law enforcement purpose and then we do not fit one of the exigent, exigent circumstances, we need to get a warrant signed by a judge.
We want to see if Michael has, check in in her backyard.
Yes. Yep. As long as you felt like you had a.
We're just listening.
Okay.
That's a touching subject.
I'm sorry.
So other than the warrant, the exigent circumstances would be locating vulnerable, vulnerable or missing children and adults. Again, this is what we see our biggest use being. I don't know if you guys are aware, but last weekend, we had a missing runaway juvenile male who is a repeat contact of ours, but we actually used Victoria Fire's drone. They came out with theirs and located him rather quickly.
And that's, and that's the scary thing. Speaking of a parent with a kid with autism, that's, it's scary that sometimes they dart for the door and you don't know exactly where they're going.
Water emergencies, drownings, rescues, identifying where they are. Natural or human-made disaster response and mitigation planning. So I don't think this year will be an issue, but if we ever flooding or what, you know, things like that, we can really use that camera for. Yeah, searching for suspects of crime and then the fun stuff, right? The community events, training, and then assisting other departments within the city. So of course, we'll fly the drone for the electrical department if they want us to look at a pole or something like that, water tower. But we will not use the drone for, kind of an exhaustive list here, but quite frankly, pretty common sense, if you will. We can't conduct random surveillance activities. We can't target someone based on a protected class. We can't harass, we can't conduct personal business, anything like that. We also can't weaponize the drone and then we can't have any biometric matching technology on it. So facial recognition, anything like that.
So Kevin, Kevin Wright got trained on this, right?
Yes.
And so the intent is to also use it for, you know, community communication purposes too, to be able to get people a better look at, you know, things we're trying to describe in communication.
That last bullet point, as the key words there that should be phrased, to collect data. I mean, if there was a protest or a demonstration for public safety, would you be able to monitor the situation? You just can't collect the data, like the facial recognition is not there, so you can't do it. But you could still use it if you're trying to just like for public safety. Is that a fair interpretation of that last bullet point?
Correct. If there's a nexus to some sort of a public safety concern or issue, it'd be an appropriate use. But if you were using it just to collect data, trying to identify parties that are part of a demonstration, that would fall, you know, outside of the, the policy.
So this is kind of where it sounds like it gets into a little bit of a gray area, right? Where if you like, if let's say you video, if you use the drone to collect video, but then outside of the drone, you have the footage and then you apply like biometric technology or you do analysis of something, it starts getting kind of fuzzy there, right? Because that wasn't the original intent, but now you have footage that came from that place. Is that?
So we'll talk a little bit about data retention and what we do with the data that's recovered and unless it's evidentiary in nature, that data that's going to be taken, i.e. video, is going to be deleted very quickly.
Unless it's for like some, to that point, unless it's for that, you know, training or public, you know, public relations purpose, right?
Yep.
Okay.
But I assume that if you're using it for like a public surveil or public like safety, right, of event and it witnesses a crime occur, then it would be admissible to use, correct?
Correct. If there is any evidence contained in the video, then that would fall under the data practices statute, which would still be classified as private data.
Okay. So a little bit about our conversation earlier. So by January 15th of every year, we'll need to report to the state all of our deployments from last year. Along with a number of deployments, we'll need to report the cost associated with the program for that calendar year. And then the state will compile that. And then I think last year was around March, they released their annual report. We will have a limited number of trained pilots. We'll start with four. This, that number wasn't including me for some reason. So we'll have five of us to start. And then along with each deployment, we'll have to do a narrative report, kind of justifying why we did what we did, associating it with a reason code and then having a dedicated case number for that deployment.
Are we going to grow that number or are we going to keep it around four or five?
In my estimation, I think for the time being, five would be sufficient. As the department grows and we also have an opportunity to look at the overall usage or need, there may be a need to expand that number in the future just to get additional coverage. Because the other thing we'll have to take a look at is just shift coverage. How often people are on duty? How many callouts have we had to do with the, you know, personnel that are trained? So I think it's, it'll probably take us a couple of years if we adopt the program just to get our feet wet and then figure out if five is sufficient or not.
There really is no standard number. Each agency kind of, each agency just kind of does what is best for them.
I mean, that.
I'm assuming there's a cost involved to each person getting trained, so you have to be.
That number is going to change and personnel is going to change as people get promoted, people retire, move on, any of those things. So that probably going to be a pretty fluid number, just, just because of that.
So the FAA, Federal Aviation Administration, is the federal regulatory authority over this program. We will fly under the small unmanned aircraft rule or Part 107 is kind of the common terminology for that. When we have a waiver to go against what the rule says, that's called the certificate of authorization. So if we want to fly higher than 400 feet, if we want to fly over crowds of people, we can get that waiver to do that. And that's also kind of all under the same Part 107. So each operator and pilot will obtain that certificate. So me, along with four others, will have that. Our drone must be registered with the FAA and Minnesota Department of Transportation, Aeronautics and Aviation. And then we must comply with all the restrictions in Part 107. Some of the most common things that you'll see come up or that we'll want to waive if we need to. Generally, we must fly at or below 400 feet. Unless you're directly above a structure, then you can incorporate that structure's height into that 400 foot. So if you're flying directly over 50-foot building, you can fly 450 feet. It all is just to comply with the airspace regulation.
How hard is it to get that waiver? If you need, for some reason, go up above the 400? Is that?
Well, so there's a special government interest waiver and then they, there's the COA, certificate of authorization. So if we need one in an emergency situation, we can fill out a form and email it to an FAA email address and they'll get back to us in a timely manner. It's not specified in.
COA?
Timely manner.
Oh.
It's not specified in writing, I'm sure, because they don't want to commit to a time. But it could take a little bit, but.
That's what, I guess that's what I was getting at. If you need it, how long is it going to take you to get something from?
But you really don't need to go against these general guidelines for most of our operation. There's no reason you would need to go above 400 feet that I can think of right now. We need to keep the drone within visual line of sight. So along with your pilot, you have an observer usually and they're the one kind of watching the drone too. Of course, that can get tricky if you're in the middle of an area with tall buildings. But if you're a little bit west on County Road 10 or something, you could see the drone for a long ways and not have to worry about losing visual line of sight. We can't fly within restricted airspace. As I mentioned earlier, luckily, we're right on the border of flying clouds airspace controlled by their tower. So we shouldn't have to worry about that unless for some reason we go and assist Eden Prairie or Chan Hassen, then we'll take that into incorporation. However, we do have apps, all pilots will have on their phones, where we can communicate with the air traffic control via an app. Say, hey, we're in the area, we're not going to fly above 400 feet, but just so you know, we're in the area. Let's, they'll approve that. We must yield right away to manned aircraft and then we must not fly over crowds without that waiver. Some things I anticipate using this for, like I said earlier, lost and missing persons are probably going to be our biggest usage for this. Taking pictures of crime scenes, crash scenes. We're not going to have reconstruction software, but we can certainly still use it to take photos of a crash scene if we feel that would be necessary. Fires, we're happy to work with the fire department on that. Hazardous material incidents, things where you don't want to get close to, but you can send a piece of equipment. And then public outreach, community events, suspect apprehension, and then assisting the sheriff's office. They do not have drones, so we'll be the only law enforcement agency that has drones. And then training.
Plans? Any conversation there cover companies having?
Not that I'm aware of, at least.
So what's next? Train and certify the pilots. And then we have to do a similar process to the body worn camera acquisition, if you guys remember. So we have to allow the public to give us feedback for a certain amount of days. Then the council has to allow, if you were to adopt this, a public, a public hearing to, for people to come and.
It's actually sort of weird. The statute's not real clear that it's an official public hearing. It just says you have to take public comment. We're treating it as if it was a public hearing, so we're, we're publishing it and advertising it.
Then once that's all done, we can hopefully officially adopt the program. We do have two avenues for public feedback, via mail, of course, and then via email. We made an email address, drones@chaska mn.gov. And per statute, we have to publish our drafted policy, which is on our website as of tonight or tomorrow morning. And then some of this material is on the website too, for people to review.
And it's worth noting too, that Officer Panning and Sergeant Personias have been working with the city's communications, specifically with Kevin. I think as early as tomorrow, this would be ready to go in terms of getting it posted on social media and start collecting that public comment. And then the plan would be we gather that information and return to a future council meeting.
They talked about March 4th?
We can, whatever works best, to get it on as a council agenda item, just to bring you up to speed on the feedback that we received. Then like Matt indicated, we'd hold a public hearing, obviously address any concerns that the council might have. And then we'd have a request for action that would request that we adopt the program, which in turn, we would then have authorization to make the purchase of the drones. And tentatively, we'd be looking at having a functional drone program by June or July.
Do other cities have like a policy when they, that they communicate out like on social media if they're going to be deploying it? So people aren't like, why is there a drone flying around?
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm not aware of anyone that proactively does that.
Okay. No, you don't want to draw attention to some of the things happening and why you'd have it up, but yeah.
Depending on the reason for its use, there may be something posted on social media just about law enforcement activity in this area. But for your typical search and rescue function, probably not. It's just really given the circumstances and maybe the likelihood of public scrutiny, I think would determine that.
And have you ever, I don't know if you've ever been around a drone flying, especially one this size. You, it's not very loud at all. So it's not going to disrupt people in their sleep or.
Yeah.
Like a state patrol helicopter could potentially.
Right.
Which, I mean, honestly, that's who we've had to rely on up to this point is, is the helicopter. So I mean, it's, it's a huge step forward for us not to have, not to have to do that. I told them that the biggest challenge we're going to have that I created for them was, you know, those drone shows that do the lights? There's, we have two drones. I want them to figure out how to do some kind of a drone show with two drones.
Chaska, 4th of July.
Yeah.
There was a, there was a drone checking the fireworks on last 4th of July. You could see it sitting up there.
Yeah.
That's all I have for prepared material. Happy to answer questions, those two as well.
Oh, oh, for some, yes. So we talked a tad about fire department. Now, the fire department's getting their own drone, correct? And getting their own pilots or am I mistaken?
Yeah, I want to be connected to our new, our new truck.
We're just getting the two, right? Yeah.
I thought there was one that was connected to the new fire truck.
A tethered one?
A tethered one, yeah, that's the word.
Not that I'm aware of.
Isn't it a thermal imaging camera?
Yeah, I, the intent was to, was, because we're using the public safety dollars, the intent was to use these two drones for basically any public safety function and then communication type stuff.
So somewhere we had a conversation about, about a tethered or not, because a tethered one, you don't have to be a pilot.
Yeah, we, there was one point we did talk about tethered, that was a long time ago. Tethered are very restricted.
Very restrictive.
And so that, that, it became pretty clear that that wasn't a real, there wasn't a real advantage to having a tethered one.
I think that that was just a way to get started into the business of drones, because you didn't have to go through it or, you know, talking about now, because I don't think you need any of that, because I mean, it's only tethered probably 50 feet in the air.
Yeah.
You know, and it can only do a search of, of whatever it's tethered, you know? So that's, I guess I'm just trying to understand, because I know that, you know, in the budgeting, the fire department put one in and then they're getting pilots. And I think they're already going because I've seen drone shots. So I'm just, I assume we're working together on this.
Not because one of the firefighters just like has their own.
Yeah, I was going to say, I, I think.
Yeah, I think it's just one of them has their own and they do their own thing with it.
We're, I don't know. Somewhere I saw that I thought they're both getting one, but I don't know.
I know that retired Chief Weeby and I, we went and did some research at other agencies with tethered drones and ultimately it just didn't gain traction for a number of different reasons. So I, I don't know for sure, Mayor, what the fire department might be working on now. But in my conversations with Chief Kraus, it hasn't come up. What I can say from a law enforcement perspective and, you know, my colleagues here are more of the experts with drones, but the untethered nature in the mobility of the drones that you saw for kind of the described purposes that we've mentioned tonight would be leaps and bounds ahead in capability standpoint for law enforcement. But of course, you know, we would work in concert with fire or other city departments if there's a need. We certainly would supplement those resources as well.
Okay, I I just. Is there any is there any discussion about like like? Some members of fire department getting like certified or getting their certifications so that way you guys can borrow the drones? Or is it just if they need them, those come to you and then you'll provide the staffing as well as the drone?
I I think at least at this time, the preferred route would be to request the equipment from us and then we would bring it as as mutual. Reason being is we are going to be requesting the purchase of two drones. Because the old saying one is good, two is better in terms of battery life and like Hunter had mentioned, having an observer with the drone pilot. I think that just given the skill set, the training involved in it, just would be easier to house it, you know, internally and then assist. That's not to say in the future that that doesn't expand, but at least in the cards right now, it would be a police related function.
I think it's a great tool. I mean, I I look at that. A young person that had drowned in the clay hole a few years ago, I think. I don't know if the outcome would have been different, but I think it would have maybe found quicker. Same thing with the two young ladies in the car in the pond. I mean, I think all of those things that. Could give the family a little more. I don't like I say, I don't know if the outcomes would have changed, but. Certainly changes on how we do things and. And really manpower. But, you know, putting enough people out there to get done what we need to get done and this. This is a lot quicker and safer.
Yeah, you think of doing a search of a wooded area, how many people that takes versus. Saw one, two people, one.
Feet apart, you know. But you don't know that the grasses are six feet high and stuff like that from there, but.
No, I echo those thoughts. I do think it's appreciated to the working effort and time looking into it. I think it's a tool that is useful and. You know, I you'll it'll be fun at the I'm thinking of the. National night outs because. You know, the the ATV that comes from the fire department draws a lot of attention all the time. So now please start putting drones up.
You can't touch the drone. No, they can touch that.
Sure, true. So all good. Yep.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is that it has a potential to make a lot of impact, right? You know, it's like, you know, get a drone. If you can like save a lost child or a lost vulnerable adult. I mean, it's like, you know, the ability to act quickly and be able to save someone and help someone who's really in need. You know, that could be, I mean, it's life saving potentially. So.
Almost seems like it's leaning more toward vulnerable adults right now than sometimes kids. I mean, that's getting to be a big thing.
Yeah.
You hear it quite often on the news.
But like you said, it's like if it's in the middle of winter when it's cold out, I mean, that could, I mean, it could save someone's life. For practically speaking, so.
Yeah, and if it saves one life in thirty years, I'd say it's worth it.
And to your point, I mean, it's truly a force multiplier. I mean, you look at our city, almost eighteen square miles. You know, especially in wooded areas and things where it's hard to access.
Veins and, yep. River.
And we have plenty of those.
We have a lot of, yeah, natural. Barriers or I don't know what you call them. Smart to do too. Backups are always a good idea.
That would be, you know, the biggest pitfalls, not, you know, having the proper quantity or if they're not maintained appropriately and, you know, the battery life, something like that. It goes dead in a short period of time.
So that would be stored in a station house. That won't be in a vehicle, right?
It commonly, long term, it will be stored inside in a storage area, but I I do anticipate that if we have an officer that's. On duty who also was trained and certified as one of the pilots, that, you know, it's small enough in a case to put that out in the field. And we could probably figure out a way to keep it charged inside of a squad car as well. But if somebody's not on duty, it wouldn't make sense just to have that move around in the back of a car. So that'd be be stored inside.
You have a questions for?
Great stuff.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you, guys.
Report. All right, that ends all of our. All of our visitor and staff reports. So next we move on to item ten approving previous meeting minutes. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I entertain a motion to approve. Thank you, guys.
Motion to approve previous meeting minutes.
Motion by Councilmember Gross.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield on approving previous meeting minutes and I don't have the date when that's from, so we'll just let go of that. Discussion. Hearing that all.
One twenty-two.
Yep.
Oh, it's so they're from one twenty-two twenty-four. Thank you. With that, any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Moves us on to, oh, it's on the next page. Sorry. Moves us to consent. Again, these are items that meet our approval, but not necessarily conversation, but any and all can be removed at any point down. That does anyone have any comments, questions on consent? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve consent.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield to approve consent. Discussion. Hearing that all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. All right, we move to action items. Item number one is commission appointments. Again, we have spent three meetings. Going over interviews and stuff like this. So I'm just going to go ahead and read the appointments and then at the end we can do it in one motion, right?
You can do it in one motion. You could do it by commission. Either way is fine.
Are we comfortable in one motion?
Can I just ask for Matt to just kind of explain process like? Post an application, we have candidates. I I think it is just helpful for the public and then we can go into that just kind of a. How do we get to this process and how and if someone is watching who says, oh, I missed my opportunity, maybe maybe not because sometimes there's openings during the year, right?
Yep.
So I just think that would be good for the public.
Yeah, so so yeah, tonight we're taking action to basically fill vacant seats on each of the commissions. And so each year vacancies occur for one or two reasons, either because somebody's term is run up. Now, they may have subsequent terms that they could have so they can reapply. They can reapply up to three times for a total of nine years. Or we may have somebody that just is stepping off and so there's creating a vacancy. Or they've run through their term limit and and we create a vacancy. So what we do. Is at the beginning of December, end of November, beginning of December, we put out advertising out into the public to. Say, we have commission openings in each of our commissions. We put a deadline out there for when people need to put in application. So we have a standard application. That people will fill out that sort of talks about their interests, experiences, why they want to be on the commission, things like that. And then we use the first two meetings of January to actually do interviews with each of the candidates. To determine either, you know, do we. Reappoint somebody who has a, you know, still has some time left, or if there's just a complete vacancy. And there's people, you know, and there's multiple people that are interested in that vacancy. Use the interviews to be able to determine who best would fit from the council's perspective that that seat. So there's positions that are open every year. You know, you had mentioned it occasionally during the course of the year, somebody might move away. Somebody might have life circumstances to take them out of being able to be in that commission. And so sometimes we'll actually go through that sort of abbreviated process during the course of the year. But for the most part, if people are interested in being on commissions, we have a lot of communication that goes out at the. Beginning of December for for people to apply for that and. And we, well, the council tries to find a position for them. So what we're left with tonight is really the final step in that process, which is to to either reappoint people or fill those vacancies.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'd also comment, I just appreciate like this year, as previous years as well, continuing to focus on that open communication to get a really good diverse group of individuals. Individuals in backgrounds and careers and thoughts and diversity and. You know, all those types of things, because I think, you know, as many of us up here have served on a commission and now sit up here. It tends to at times be what I would consider like a feeder pool to a council role potentially. And so continuing to have our commissions and 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 council be reflective of the community, I think, is is is. Great and advantageous and really gets things done, right? I mean, I think we've talked a little bit during the interviews, right? Like lots of different backgrounds have interest and people generally, I think everyone just wants to serve the community. So again, I think we accomplished that with. The applicant pool that we kind of see apply, which I think is good, good for the city overall.
I I don't know if I I missed it. I was looking at some of these things here, but. One thing that I really feel good about is we've been pretty active about getting student volunteers. We never had those for a long time and and I I think that that's. It really started on the Park and Recs Commission, but we've gotten more and more that we put. Students on other committees, which like, so now we have another one, we have one on human rights. So it's it gives another perspective that we sometimes don't always look at, look at their, especially for the. Park and Rec. I mean, that's where we really felt it was important that that we get a student representative on there. And I I think I think it's starting to get a little traction because we're actually getting more people than we've got spots for, so.
And there's been some really quality students who have come forward.
They've been really outstanding. So we're very fortunate. I hope that continues because. I know in my early days here, we never filled those spots. They were always just.
We have one from last year that's at Johns Hopkins University. I mean, that's it very high quality students.
So, yeah, it's pretty cool. So with that, and and like I said, that's good that Councilmember Grab brought that up. I guess we don't talk about that enough about how important these really commissions are in the process that we go through. It's just not. That, you know, we grab people and say, you're on it, that there is a process that has to be done and. Every commission is really. Advisory to us. They, the planning commission, for instance, they take care of all the variances, make sure it meets all of our ordinances. Otherwise, we our council meetings would probably be five hours long. Who knows how long they'd be. So that's great. And and there's really only one commission, which really is not having any appointees, is the Heritage Preservation Committee. They really tell us what can and can't be done historically, but all the rest are advisory. So that's kind of a little rundown on.
And most of the people that, at least when we do interviews, most of the people we've usually never met before. So it shows that it's new people getting involved in the community and not just, you know, it's not just the same old people that get involved. It's really a new new people getting involved at the grassroots level.
And Heritage Preservation doesn't have anyone this any openings this year, right? But this usually.
Nobody was up for.
Yeah.
Up for. So, yeah, that's I I was thinking about it as I was looking here, there's nobody from the Heritage Preservation. Anyways, and and I think we were going to recognize one gentleman tonight, you know, he put on nine years. And we've had a lot of people that have really termed out, so they're they're, you can do three, three year terms for nine years. And that's quite a commitment. That's a long time. And so these these commission members are very important and we're really happy that. We're getting more names than we have spots for. That's not happened in the past either. So the interest is there. I think we're getting out enough that. That people are seeing it. We're getting out in the social media and the different media locations. And in fact, I think we're as a council encouraging people to join as well. So I think that's important. So. Thanks to everyone. How that works. So, all right. Further ado, I'm going to just go ahead and read off. Did we decide is one, are we good with one motion for the whole? Package or would you like to do each one individually? I'll leave it up to you guys.
One motion is fine.
They one motion.
Okay, we're gonna do it one motion. So I'm gonna go ahead and read here for so for our Park and Recs Commission, we had five openings. We had three incumbents, which means they were already serving and they're they're re-upped their terms, actually four incumbents, sorry. So Donell, is it? Hi, hi, okay. And then incumbent Jason Branch, incumbent Carly Whitner, and then Kevin Hill. Is a new and then our student rep that I just got talking about is Sam Sam Hassan. And she's another one. I think that's gonna, we're gonna be quite impressed when she comes where she goes to college. She's another smart young lady. In our planning commission, we really only had one opening and that is incumbent and we're going to reappoint Rob Brass. And then in our human rights, we had seven openings. So. One, two, three, four, four incumbents again. So incumbent Sarah Carlson, incumbent Martin Hubbard. Incumbent Honey Sanderson, Honey, Honey. Ha, huh?
Hana.
Hana, okay. Hana Sanderson, Kevin Me. And then for our first alternate is Brittany Ahan. That sound right? Ahan. Okay, and then our second alternative is Yusuf Hamza. So that fills the human rights. Oh, nope, one more. And then our student, we made it, we put a student rep there. That's Juwi Gotti. And that's all the commissions that we are filling, right? Yeah, I got everybody. Okay. So with that, I would, if there's no discussion. I would entertain a motion to approve that commission members. As read.
So so moved.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Grab to appoint the said names to the commissions. Discussion.
Just a point of clarification. If you want to, you can abstain from voting for one person and just say you if if you feel more comfortable that way.
All right, one second. Oh, no, just kidding. Yeah, I was like. Here, I'm like, oh, we're. I thought we'd miss saying someone individually, but we didn't. We didn't miss saying someone. I thought we missed one, but we're good.
Yeah, so you you could just make a point of just abstaining for one person if you want. You don't have to, but.
No, it's fine. I I should. I I think.
Do we name them for clarification?
Yes, well, your your husband Martin is.
I was just gonna say, so she's probably gonna abstain from.
Going to abstain.
She's going to abstain because Martin Hubbard is her husband. But she's going to, I assume, vote yes on the rest of the members.
Yes.
Is that, so I hope that's clear. Two motion people, are you good with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. With that, we're gonna go ahead and vote and you can abstain and I would say the member. When we when we do that, okay? Kind of awkward, isn't it?
It is awkward.
All right, all in favor of appointing said members to the commission, say aye.
Aye, aye with an abstain on one.
On Martin Hubbard.
On Martin Hubbard.
Okay, opposed. Motion carries. Cut through that. Shouldn't have been that hard, but we did. We did. I kind of forgot about that.
I did too.
All right, next is item two, which is is naming the. Chair and vice chair for the Park and Recs Commission Committee. With that, the names are the. Chair will be Jason Branch, correct? And then the first, the vice chair would be Elizabeth.
Wenveen.
Wenveen. Again, I'm going to open that up if if there's anyone that's got any discussion. Otherwise, I would just look for a motion again to that the Park and Rec Commission Chair. Is Jason Branch and the and the vice chair is Elizabeth Wyben, YV, YV.
Yep, so moved.
Second, motion by Councilmember Hatfield, second by Councilmember Wong to approve said members to the. Park and Recs are to be chair or vice chair. Discussion. Hearing that all in favor. Hearing that, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Both same side. All right, motion carries. That's all of our action items. We'll move on to bills. Anyone?
I've got four quick ones. Um, so first one is on page two for the item under Archer Mechanical. There is a, uh, replace two RTUs over something, doesn't.
Yeah, so we're in the budget process for the community center. We had the, the last remaining art rooftop. Uh, HVAC units over Saint Francis addition of the, uh, of the community center, so. That's those two units.
Okay, got it. Um, second one's on page eleven. Um, there's an item, there's an item for kilom engineering for. Um, Verizon Sprint and T-Mobile Inspection Services. So my question is. Wouldn't the wireless carriers be responsible for their own inspections?
They are. So what you're seeing here is, uh, this is in our, our, uh. Uh, Undermark water tower that got painted.
Yeah.
Uh, they had to get removed. And so when they got reinstalled, we required the cell phone companies to put an escrow with us. Uh, to cover all of the inspection fees that they had and anything that wasn't used. With that then gets rebated back to them. That's what you're seeing here.
Okay, gotcha. So this is because we did work and then we have to rebate them back for that.
No, they, no, uh, they're required when we do work on a tower to take off the equipment at their own expense.
Okay.
And they're required to put it back on at their own expense. And they're also required to pay us to make sure that they've put it on it, uh, correctly.
Okay.
So that's what they put the escrow, uh, for.
Gotcha.
So we use the escrow to pay, uh, because we want our own engineers to look at it, not theirs.
Yeah.
Um, and then whatever is left over in the escrow, after we've done that, then we refund.
So basically we take an escrow more than we need so that we don't have to go back for more money. But either case, it's just to make sure that. We have enough money to cover the inspections, which is still ultimately their cost. We just need to see the deposit on the other.
Yeah, and we want to control the inspection because we, we don't want to take their word for it.
Yeah, with our power, we have liability on it. So, yeah. Okay, got it, got it. Okay, so page seventeen, um. There's an item for portable restroom trailers. So my guess was this was a temp fire station or was it something else?
Yeah, no, that's exactly what it's for because we don't have a sewer system there. Uh, one thing to note about this though is that. We opted for purchase of this because we get eighty percent of that cost back. Uh, it, they'll. Uh, the contract we'd have with them would guarantee that we get eighty percent of that cost back. When we're done using it. So the actual cost won't be seventy thousand, it'll actually be fourteen thousand. If we would have rented it, uh, we wouldn't have got, had that option.
Okay, so that means that this is, so is it a term that we have to return it? Or sell it back to them by, or is it one of those things, so if it ends up being a little bit longer, then, you know, the cost isn't like significantly more for us?
Uh, no, I mean, that's, it's just saying when we're done with it, they guarantee that to buy it back at that.
Gotcha. So that's, so which is, so that means that.
And we have to maintain it. We can't, we can't give, we can't.
Same comparable conditions.
Yes, exactly.
I mean, which, so but basically what it means is that if for some reason we either use it longer because this continues onsite or we find, oh, we need to use it for a different project for a little.
We own it. We can, we, we don't have to sell it back to them. We could say, you know what? We might need this for next project. Let's just keep it.
Exactly.
Um, but, um, we probably will not do that.
Yeah, but it gives us some more flexibility in terms of that, but it doesn't increase our cost to extend it for a longer period.
Should make our cost less, probably in all likelihood, based on that.
That's what it sounds like.
Seventeen, eighteen month rental versus, you know.
I was almost like the longer we have it, the better the deal is, right? Yeah, okay. Um, and then the last question is on page four, which is actually in the P card. But I noticed there was like a, a, a large charge for the February service surf from Met Council. My understanding is that usually comes out of the other bills.
Yeah, we, uh, if you remember, Matt Burt, uh, our finance person was in here. Couple of months ago and he was talking about how anything that we can charge on our, our P card. Uh, because we get, uh, we, we get back, uh, uh, reward dollars on that. So Met Council allows up to twenty thousand dollars of our bill to be charged. Uh, on a credit card and the rest we pay through accounts payable.
Okay.
So we, whenever we have the opportunity to pay large bills on the credit card, we will.
Okay, so it's basically like getting the city, getting like frequent flyer miles sort of thing, but then it goes in, which can go back into other city uses, correct? Okay.
Alright. If I would be cash dollars back.
Yes, not airline miles.
Correct. I got your analogy, but we're not stockpiling mileage.
Yeah, it's the flight of the water tower, right? The flight of drone now. Alright, so that's all you got. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Motion paid bills.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember McGraw, uh, to pay the bills. Discussion. Hearing that, Elise?
From Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Aye.
Here Winchell.
Yes. All right, moves us to other business. Uh, Councilmember Wong.
All right, so the fire, the fireman's fishing contest was this past Saturday, um, and it's unfortunately, the water was pretty open. So, um, it was held indoors. It sounded like it was a really good turnout from, I wasn't able to attend, but it sounded like it was a great turnout. I'll let other people like chime in on that too. Um, and I'll, I have a long list, but I'll just pick a few that, um. So I think that there's, um, there's the one twelve gives foundation has, uh, has a soray Mardi Gras that was. Um, that's on February twelfth, that's, that's coming up, that hazel scene, so it's sold out already, which is crazy. So. Yeah, so it's fantastic. So it should be really good. Um, the one of the cool things that's coming up is also River City Days Committee is actually having an open community meeting on. Sunday, February eighteenth from ten to twelve at Little Ruse. And what they're doing is they're basically having an open meeting. So they're trying to gather feedback. Um, from the community and also discussing volunteering and, um, just trying to, you know, create a dialogue with the community. So if anyone's interested in providing feedback. On River City Days, the, it sounds like the board's gonna be there. Some members of the, the board will be there to listen to feedback from the public. So. It's at Little Ruse on Sunday, the eighteenth from ten to twelve.
I think it's just, it's a statement because we talk about it come summer, the distinction that River City Days is a separate entity who puts it on. Not connected to the city because, again, depending on where you came from growing up in town, you have city celebrations, sometimes those are different. So I appreciate that. I just want to.
Absolutely agree with your clarification because they do have their own board. They do not have a.
They are nonprofit. They're five oh one. They're not C, they're something else.
Yep, exactly. Um, and of course, you know, there's, um, and of course, one of the other things that I'm looking forward to is in May. Sunday, May fifth, the Loop Grand Opening is coming up. So that's, you know, kind of a little bit away there and that's the day after Christmas in May. So. Uh, those two are a little further out, but, um, quite a bit of, uh, good stuff coming up. And. Only other thing I'll mention is the Chaska Community Center has a carnival on Friday, March first from five thirty to seven thirty at the community center. And they're generating, um, uh, funds for the, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a, they're generating. Funds for the Park and Rec Scholarship Fund. So good event there. Um, so that's all I've got for tonight.
All right, thank you.
No, I don't have much. Um, the fishing contest I was able to make, um, that was such a great event. They, I, I want to thank. The relief in the active and retired that put that on. There's a lot of hard work involved in that and, um. It's just such a nice event and it wa- it was really heartwarming to see that even though they couldn't do the fishing aspect of it. That the community really showed up and had a great time. I met a really nice family that actually knows Councilmember McGraw, because his, their son plays basketball with your son and. Had a really great conversation with them. Just, they live in Chaska, just really enjoy being here. So it's just such a great community building event. So.
The room was full at the event center, so that was pretty good.
Yeah.
A lot of people standing in the round. So that was, it really was a good turnout.
That was, and it was such a nice day outside and so it was just nice to see people take that time and, and do that. Um, the, just a couple of things to note, uh, down here at the library this week, uh, on the seventh. Which I believe is Wednesday, uh, at three o'clock, um, or three to seven, I think it is, but they're, they're celebrating their hundred first birthday. Um, so that's really exciting and kind of fun and unique. Love the library. Uh, so if you can make it, it sounds like there'll be a presentation. I'm sure they'll have some refreshments and some other fun things going on.
Isn't that three fifteen?
Three fifteen, not three o'clock?
Three fifteen, they're gonna do a little presentation.
I don't know, maybe it's at three.
I believe so.
Um, and then, uh. Also, this weekend on the tenth, the polar plunge, I know it's not happening in. Chaska, but it's happening in Waconia. Are you jumping? Are you going? Oh. Um, the reason why I mentioned this is because I know that the Chaska Police Department and the Carver County Sheriff are, department are. Um, kind of having like a low key. I don't know, what do you want to call it?
Competition.
Competition, thank you. I was like, it's not a rivalry. What is this? Uh, where they're, you know, both trying to out raise money. So. Right now, currently, I'm, I'm kind of torn because the, the Carver County, um, they are doing, they have more money. Um, I, I want the Chaska PD to win, but my, my husband and son are jumping for the Carver County.
Sure.
Uh, I'm not that. I'm not, no, no, I'm good. So. Anyway, just mention that. It sounds like it'll be a great day, great event. Money being raised goes towards Special Olympics. That's a huge win. It's at noon. It's at Lola's Lake House over there on Lake Waconia. Uh, and then lastly, near and dear to my heart. I like to mention this every year. Park and Recs is hosting the Sweethearts Dance. Um, it's Friday, it's February sixteenth. I am always so sad that my son. Has aged out of this event. I felt a little.
I remember when my kids aged out too.
Because COVID would have been like the last year, he would have been old enough. And he told me he would keep taking me no matter how old, but I feel like if I were to force him to be down there, he probably would not be happy with me. So, uh, to all those that have younger kids in that preschool, um, you know, age. Uh, kindergarten age, it's such a fun event. They'll have a DJ. They have, I think they have some refreshments. It's at the event center. Um, it's from six thirty to eight. Uh, I think you have to register and pay just like a nominal fee, um. Cover the cost. It's on the sixteenth. It's a Friday. It's a perfect. Opportunity for those small children to take their moms and dads out on a night on the town. So I love to mention it and that's all I got.
Thank you. Good report. How about Ms. Hatfield next?
Yeah, um. Not necessarily Chaska, but supporting one of our Chaska firefighters, Soggy Bottoms last weekend, was the last weekend? Weekend before?
No, weekend.
Weekend before. Was just a nice event. It was a lot of fun. I'm sad they're not doing it again the same way next year. It was fun to mud golf is what I called it because there was not snow. Um, I got a hole in one, but it was just a nice event supporting. Zach and seeing the community show up for that and, um, they raised eighteen thousand dollars for Zach and.
I think that's pretty good.
Yeah, it was, yeah, um.
For our event or something.
Yeah, and it was just, it was a good event. So, um, thank you to the Carver Lions for doing that and the Chaska Lions. Um, showed up to volunteer too. So just a great community we live in. So, um. Second, I met with our new library branch manager, Kevin, um, a couple of weeks ago. And it was just a good conversation talking about the future of the library and what that looks like and kind of what he sees for I, our library. And I got a lot of good. Information that I didn't know about, but while we were sitting there, uh, by the fireplace, there on the racks there are. Rent a book clubs and I just thought they were so fun that you could go rent a book club. So it has like eight books in it and some questions. And you could rent that, has like a ba- a tote bag. You can rent that and have like a book club and I just. Uh, thought that was so fun and I didn't know it existed. So I thought I'd share, um, but just grateful we have such a cool library and that does things like that. So. Um. Also wanted to recognize Black History Month. I think actually come follow those rent book, rent a book clubs have books. Um, that would be very good for this month. So just recognizing that you can actually go to blackhistorymonth.gov and learn more about. Um, the month and why we celebrate it and has art and books and other resources at that website. So I just wanted to. Share and celebrate that. Um, some events coming up. There's food distribution on the fifteenth at noon. The normal spot, um, February twenty first, coffee with a cop at the North McDonald's. So I thought that's kind of fun up on. Hazeltine Boulevard. Yeah, um. And then safety camp coming up in June. There's still spots for that. That's always a fun event for the kiddos. Do a couple of days with, uh, the police department, um. And then a new interesting event that I thought I'd share for those, well, with or without kids in the school district, but. The interim superintendent Erin Raski and the director of communications and community relations, uh, Kaylee Haga, well, Hega. Sorry, I say that every time. Um, we'll be at Red Bench in downtown Chaska on Thursday, February eighth. From seven thirty to nine, just to have casual conversation and get to chat with them. So that, that's good if anybody's interested in just going to meet. Interim superintendent and just chatting and having coffee. February eighth from seven thirty AM to nine AM at Red Bench. It's a Thursday. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember McGraw.
Yeah, just a couple of celebrations. You would recognize and celebrate Black History Month and the important contributions of that community to. Country and the world, truthfully. Um, so thank you for sharing that, Councilmember Hatfield. Um, and then a personal celebration, I have this process of recognizing my children. So happy birthday to my youngest tomorrow. Uh, you know, I won't tell his age because I don't want to make myself feel older, but he's, he's my youngest and he's not getting so young anymore. Uh, so happy birthday, Noah. I jokingly tell him that when he's old someday, he'll be able to tell his friends he can come back to like the YouTube channel and say that he was on YouTube. So. Uh, it is his birthday tomorrow as well. So, and that is all I have.
Thank you. Elise?
No report this evening.
No report? That's a great report.
Well, she's seen us three Mondays in a row. She's probably.
Kristoff, anything?
I'm no report.
No report. All right, Matt?
Uh, the only thing I forgot to put in my biweekly is that, uh, with the weather, the way it is, we are going to move forward. Uh, sooner than later on removing the trees in city. Uh, City Hall Plaza in the parking lot out here.
And all the trees, or like, do the pine trees get to stay?
Yeah, no, it's just the, it's just the ash.
The ash trees. The evergreens get to stay.
Yeah.
Thank goodness, I was gonna cry.
Yeah, but, uh, there's a lot of ash trees out there. So, so people will notice it. We're gonna put out a, a notice just to. Make sure people are aware that we just don't like cutting down trees, why we're actually doing it and stuff, but it's. If you saw it last summer, it, it was sad. I mean, there's, it, they just, the trees looked horrible. So.
That's it?
Yep.
All right, uh, real quick, uh, council schedule, uh, our normal day would have been February nineteenth, but that's President's Day. So our next meeting is the twenty sixth. Then we should be back on a normal rotation first. First one's March fifth or fourth.
Fourth.
Fourth. Uh, so we go from there. This is the last one for, for now anyways. Um. One thing I want to know that I, and just, I know our, uh, public works grew and parks. Uh, worked hard to get the rinks open and about the time we got them open for about four days, it turned forty. So. They're gone now. They're done. So they're, we're not, they're not coming back. But it's unfortunate. They put a lot of time in that during that cold spell and just like that, it's, it's, uh. All gone. So, um, just a couple of things again out future wise that. Um, I know I got an email asking about the. The Chaska Bash, which supports, um, all extracurricular activities at Chaska High School. Um, is gonna be April twelfth. Seems early. May, but I, I don't know. She, she said something about that the.
It's a good, really good date though.
That's your birthday?
Yeah.
So anyways, uh, just a note to get that on your calendar. Uh, I'm sure more will come out as we move on in the future. Then another one, I'm not sure if this is a public celebration, uh, but I think it's, it's well noted on April twenty fourth is gonna be. Uh, first responders luncheon.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
They want to get, like, the general public to come.
I wasn't sure that. I thought the last time they kind of kept it.
They're trying to grow it into, because there's the, I think it's Twin West Chamber has one that's like huge and they get a. Big community participation. They want to get it to be a growing event so that it just gets bigger every year.
So, so anyways, that's gonna be April twenty fourth and then I think. Generally what they do is they, they take some incidents that happen in, and they recognize those folks, but then. It's really a recognition for all the first responders. And, uh, PDs in, in the county. So, uh, good event. That's April twenty fourth. I don't have any details. That, that's all I have. I'm looking at this one. That, that's all I have. I'm looking at this one. That's all. Yeah. It's all I have right now. It's still a little ways out. Um, another thing I just wanna touch on is, um, we have our department retreat. Uh, March twenty one, twenty two. Um. These are really kinda give us the guidance where we're going. That's our strategic planning as we look forward to. What do we wanna do? What's next? What do we, what do we need to tackle and stuff like that? So, uh, we spend nearly two full days. Um, doing that. So, um, just something I just wanna mention. It's just one of those things that, that, uh. That we do on a yearly basis.
There's quite a bit of stuff that we do, uh, beforehand to actually prepare for that too, for those discussions. So, so I know. Elise and I are meeting with our facilitators on Thursday to start that sort of process of going through it. You know, just to make sure that, we wanna make sure that it's productive.
You know, I, I just think of all the things that have come out of those retreats that we, you know, we talked about. We. I, I still remember the time we said, we gotta look at ourselves. How are we doing? And then we found out that's where we ended up with, uh. Staffing study and things like that to see where we, where we stood on things. And I think we did a. What do you call a salary? What is that called? Salary?
The salary study?
Yeah, it's just a salary study. Uh, looked at, did, we talked about ourselves and we took care of it. Another one was. Was talk about having quality facilities and, and that's where we're currently working on that. Those are all. Things that come out of that. So they're, they're generally pretty, uh, they're, they're important and. It's a lot of work for two days, but it seems like we've always come out of there with good direction where we're gonna go in the future. So. Pretty awesome. Uh, we already talked about fishing contests, great event. I think that's it. Last call. If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Here, adjourn.